Welcome to the Paramount Theater of Burlington, the showplace of Allamance County since 1928. Our facility is owned by the citizens of Burlington and operated in their interest by the Department of Recreation and Parks. The following reminders are designed to make your visit even more enjoyable. There are three emergency exits, the two doors through which you enter the auditorium, and the double doors on the left side of the stage. Restroom facilities are located on either side of the concession stand. Please remember that the use of tobacco products, including e-cigarettes, is prohibited in the Paramount parking lots and sidewalks. In addition, no food or drinks, with the exception of bottled water, are allowed anywhere in the auditorium, including the balcony. Please refrain from taking flash photographs. Unauthorized use of sound or video recording devices may constitute a violation of copyright laws and is strictly prohibited. At this time, you must turn off all cell phones and similar electronic devices. This is your friend and reminder that masks must be worn at all times while inside the building. If you need a mask break, please exit to the lobby. Your support in keeping the theater open by masking up, washing your hands, and keeping your distance from others is appreciated. Once again, welcome to the Paramount Theater of Burlington, the showplace of Allamance County.
Good evening, everyone. Thank you all for joining us this evening for our city council meeting. Today is December 7, 2021. As the all-powerful voice that Dave Wright mentioned, please silence all electronic devices at this time. For tonight's invocation, we call on Councilmember Bob Ward.
Let it right. As we are all aware by our recent elections, we are reminded and remain especially grateful for the many freedoms of our democracy. We are particularly grateful for living in a democracy where we as citizens participate in our own governance. As we begin our proceeding tonight, we ask for a special blessing for our soon-beached sworn-in as Mayor Jim Butler and Councilmembers Harold Owen and Ronnie Wall as they continue their service to our city. We express our gratitude to Mayor Ian Baututhis for his dedication and contributions to our community over the past six years. As we convene this city council meeting, we join with others in extending their deepest sympathies to the families of those people who are suffering as a result of the continuing gun violence in our city as well as throughout our country. And we also remember those whose lives have been changed in many ways and often forever by the coronavirus. Strengthen us to continue to remain vigilant and dedicated to ending the tragic chapter of our lives. We offer our sincere gratitude to those in the various military and governmental professions who must be far away from their families in service to our country. We give thanks for our city staff for their continued commitment to and dedication in serving our citizens during these demanding and dreadful times. As we enter this special season of giving and remembering, we give thanks for this time we can all be together with our families. Please especially bless those less fortunate and make it more aware and responsive to their needs. In our deliberations tonight, we ask that our actions be guided by the highest standards of ethics and that our personal faiths give us strength to act honestly and well in all matters that come before us. We ask these things for the well-being of our citizens and all people. Amen.
Before council are minutes from our November 1st, 2021 City Council work session and our November 16th, 2021 City Council meeting. I hear a motion and second to approve, doesn't it?
So move.
Motion to approve made by Councilmember Ward, seconded by Councilmember Owen. Any questions regarding the motion to approve? All those in favor, please say aye. All those opposed? Motion is passed, the minutes have been approved. Next we have a special presentation, this time a believer recognizing Mayor for ten Kathy Heitz.
Thank you, Mayor. I want to make a few remarks as Ian goes on to the next chapter in his life, closing the city council chapter for right now. Wanted to remark on how well he has served our city. We have had many, many accomplishments and we often forget to do some celebration over the kinds of things that have occurred over the last six years of the mayor's term. With the rest of the city council and with our excellent staff and employees in the city of Burlington, I think that you all can say that we have accomplished a great deal. Many, many things have come to completion, many things have been started, and there's still a way to go to improve things for our citizens and all the people in our community. I also want to point out, because I served as mayor pro town, I got to see a lot of what Ian was doing behind the scenes. And I think something that is important for me to point out to people is that he spent hours and hours going to classrooms in our county, not just the city, but county schools as well, speaking to schoolchildren. He brings and has brought an enthusiasm for city government that not everyone feels and not everyone aspires to, and we are very grateful for that.
Many, many cities struggle with helping citizens understand the role of city government and how big a role it plays. It's local, it matters, and it's important that citizens are involved. And Ian tried very hard to let especially children know that they have a role to play and that they could aspire to the same. So I'm grateful for that, thank you for your applause. I want to present this to you, Ian. It's from the city of Burlington in grateful appreciation for your dedicated service to Ian Baututhis, Burlington City Council Mayor, 2015 to 2021. Thank you very much.
This time we'll call for the certification of our election. I will call on our interim city clerk, Michelle Parker Evans.
Good evening, everyone. At this time, I will confirm the abstract of votes of the municipal elections held on November 2, 2021, as certified by the Allamance County Board of Elections and the Guilford County Board of Elections. Votes for Mayor: Jim Butler, 4,541; Ian Baututhis, 3,324; Ryan Fox, 26. Votes for Councilmembers: Ronnie Wall, 4,483; Carol Owen, 1,274; Wow Bird, 3,222; Devon Adicolo, 3,117; Ryan Fox, 37. Let it be confirmed that Jim Butler is the duly elected mayor for a two-year term expiring in December 2023. Ronnie Wall and Harold Owen are duly elected council members for four-year terms expiring in December 2025. At this time, I'll ask the elected mayor and council members to step forward to receive their oath of office administered by Billy Smith.
Wow, don't you look nice.
I just want you to know, it is my honor and my privilege to administer your oath of office tonight, and I thank you for your service. Raise your right hand and place your left hand on the Bible and repeat after me. I, Jim Butler...
I, Jim Butler.
I, Harold Owen.
I, Harold Owen.
I, Ronnie Wall.
I, Ronnie Wall.
Do solemnly swear...
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
And that I will be faithful...
And that I will be faithful.
And bear true allegiance...
And bear true allegiance.
To the state of North Carolina...
To the state of North Carolina.
And to the constitutional powers...
And to the constitutional powers.
And authorities...
And authorities.
Which are...
Which are.
Or may be established...
Or may be established.
For the government thereof.
For the government thereof.
And that I will endeavor...
And that I will endeavor.
To support...
To support.
Maintain and defend...
Maintain and defend.
The Constitution of the laws of said state.
The Constitution.
Wow, don't you look nice? I just want you to know, it is my honor and my privilege to administer your oath of office tonight. And I thank you for your service. Raise your right hand and place your left hand on the Bible and repeat after me. I, Jim Butler.
I, Jim Butler.
I, Harold Owen.
I, Harold Owen.
I, Ronnie Wall.
I, Ronnie Wall.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
And that I will be faithful.
And that I will be faithful.
And bear true allegiance.
And bear true allegiance.
To the state of North Carolina.
To the state of North Carolina.
And to the constitutional powers.
And to the constitutional powers.
And authorities.
And authorities.
Which are.
Which are.
Or may be established.
Or may be established.
For the government thereof.
For the government thereof.
And that I will endeavor.
And that I will endeavor.
To support.
To support.
Maintain and defend.
Maintain and defend.
The Constitution of the laws of said state.
Constitution of the laws of said state.
Not inconsistent with.
Not inconsistent with.
The Constitution of the United States.
Constitution of the United States.
To the best of my knowledge and ability.
To the best of my knowledge and ability.
And that I will.
And that I will.
Well and truly execute.
Well and truly execute.
The duties of the office of mayor.
The duties of the office of mayor.
The duties of the office of councilmember.
Duties of the office of councilmember.
For the city of Burlington.
For the city of Burlington.
According to the law.
According to the law.
So help me God.
So help me God.
Congratulations.
Thank you, everybody. I want to tell you how much we appreciate your patience through that. That was a pretty long oath. I think you changed that, Beverly. We'll now return to our agenda and go through the rest of our meeting as the agenda should show for everyone. But the next item on the agenda, as this new council convenes, is the election of Mayor Pro Tem. And at this time, we'll proceed with the election of Mayor Pro Tem pursuant to Section 3.21 of our city charter. This is a two-year term, so the Mayor Pro Tem by city charter will fill in for the mayor in the event that I'm not available or other ceremonial activities is deemed. So at this point in time, I would open the floor for nominations.
Mr. Mayor, I'd recommend Harold Owen.
Mr. Mayor, I move we close the nominations.
Is there a second?
Second.
We've got a motion on the floor for Harold Owen for Mayor Pro Tem. Motion's been made by Councilmember Ward and seconded by Councilmember Ronnie Wall. At some point in time, I will probably refer to him as mayor, just bear with me on that. All in favor of closing the nominations, please signify by aye with a show of hands.
Aye.
Any opposed? So congratulations to Harold Owen as our Mayor Pro Tem for the next two years. And at this time, we'd ask Beverly Smith to come back up to the stage to administer the oath of office for Mayor Pro Tem Harold Owen.
It'd be my honor. Thank you. Harold, you can stand right where you are and Madam.
Okay. So at this time, we actually will need to vote. Okay. So all in favor of voting for Harold Owen for Mayor Pro Tem, signify by aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay.
Now we start over, right, Beverly?
Yep, now you start over. That was a shortcut.
Okay. Are you ready, sir?
Yes.
Okay. I, Harold Owen.
I, Harold Owen.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
And that I will be faithful.
And I will be faithful.
And bear true allegiance.
And bear true allegiance.
To the state of North Carolina.
The state of North Carolina.
And to the constitutional powers.
And to the constitutional powers.
And authorities.
And authorities.
Which are.
Which are.
Or may be established.
Or may be established.
For the government thereof.
For the government thereof.
And that I will endeavor.
And I will endeavor.
To support.
To support.
Maintain and defend.
Maintain and defend.
The Constitution and laws of said state.
Constitution and laws of said state.
Not inconsistent with.
Not inconsistent with.
The Constitution of the United States.
The Constitution of the United States.
To the best of my knowledge and ability.
To the best of my knowledge and ability.
And that I will.
And that I will.
Well and truly execute.
Well and truly execute.
The duties of the office of Mayor Pro Tem.
Duties of the office of Mayor Pro Tem.
For the city of Burlington.
For the city of Burlington.
According to the law.
According to the law.
So help me God.
Yep.
Congratulations.
Thank you. The next item on the agenda is to hear some comments and recognitions. I know there's a lot of family and friends present from our newly-elected officials. So we'll open the floor if anyone wants to make some comments. Well, I'll start. This is a special place to have this function for a couple of reasons. Some one, it's great to see the turnout we got here, and I think we all are very appreciative of that. Secondly, a little sad story. I always daughter, who is down here with the two curly little blond-haired grandsons. When she got married, we were in a midst of attempting to find the right location. The Paramount Theater had just, had not really opened, but this was a spot that we chose. So I can tell you now, I think we're still paying for the flowers it took to decorate this December. Well, it worked out great, and the two grandsons are wonderful byproducts of all that. So just a brief story. You know, I want to just to thank all of our citizens who voted in our recent election. You know, it was a record turnout for Burlington in a local election, which says an awful lot when our election was held in the midst of a pandemic. And I'm very appreciative of the people that came out to vote. We hope to even increase that going forward. Local elections, especially a local election following a national election where president's elected, normally the turnout's not very good. But thanks to everyone who did come out and vote, we're very appreciative of that. I'm deeply humbled to be elected and to be on this board. I think we can work together and truly, I believe, this board brings a lot of firepower to it, and we can do some great things for this community. It's time to see Burlington grow. It's time to see us prosper. And I think that's what many of us has got in mind in terms of trying to provide the best quality of services we can to all of our residents. Special thanks to my wife, to Nan, who lived with me through the campaign. And that was a chore in itself, I admit, who handled my social media. I'm not a social media person, but she was wonderful, and I can't tell you how much I appreciate what she's done. And she also keeps me very humble, believe me. At no point in time can my head get so big, because she really brings me back down to where it's supposed to be. So thank you. A special thanks to all of our donors who helped us in this campaign and really, as much important as that, to all the volunteers who worked the various polls. I look back in those two, from the primary and general election. It was amazing for during this election how the same people were working both elections, which says a lot, and I'm very appreciative of that. I want to assure you that the council and our citizens, that our staff, that we need to work together to accomplish things. This is a team effort. It's not one person. It's not a party. It's everyone trying to be on the same wavelength to accomplish what's best for our citizens. And it's all our citizens. It's just not any special interest group or whatever it may be. Finally, and this is just personal, but in these extreme political times, I'm very proud to say that Nan, this is my second time I've been elected as a registered independent. And I actually see some hope for that going forward. I look forward to working with all of our residents and certainly our council members and our staff as we go forward over the next four years. So thank you.
I'm not really sure how to follow up with all that. It's exciting to be here in front of you tonight, and it's great to see a wonderful crowd. I would echo some of the same things that Harold had to say. It was special. It was an opportunity for us to grow, not only grow as a city, but grow as a group of council members and a mayor. I'm really looking forward to that. But you're only as good as the people around you. And I would like to introduce my family, my wife, Suzie, who was up here with us earlier. You stand if you like. Then our daughter, Ann. I remember very well, back in 2005, I think, was my first run. And she was pretty active in the fact that she said, "I'm not really talking to anyone about you. I'll put a sign in her yard, and I'll work a poll early, and that's it." Said, "Okay, thanks. Appreciate it." This time, she worked extremely hard for a lot of different people and a lot of different reasons. So I'm very proud to call her my wife. I was very excited about her enthusiasm this time around. So thank you. I appreciate that. Next, our daughter, Ann. If you would stand, please. Ann Johnson. Her husband, Taylor. And you saw the two grandkids. First one, the oldest one is Baxter. He's a little bashful, if you didn't know it. And then the next one is Charlie Wall, little man. They've worked extremely hard on this campaign as well. Next, someone that's very dear to my heart as well is my sister, Belinda, Belinda Day. And her husband, Randy. They're not too proud. They're not standing. That makes me nervous. And then we have, I have two nieces here. One is Ashley. She's a thing. Her boyfriend, Jacob Countess. And then Caroline. Caroline came all the way in for Chapel Hill to be with. So thank you. Love you guys, and thank you for your support.
Okay, first off, I want to tell everyone how true an honor it is and a privilege to serve as your mayor for the next two years. You know, we're here tonight, and Harold may mention the Paramount Theater. An endeavor like this is not ever easy to pull something off. We're not normally here. We're normally at City Hall. First time we've been together in quite some time. And it's really a blessing to see everybody and be sitting with everybody. But to Dave Wright and the staff of Paramount Theater, we really want to tell you how much we appreciate you. Let's give them a round of applause. And you, there's always many people involved in a campaign. There's far too many to start naming. You leave folks out, and it's tough to give everybody credit where they deserve. But we were very fortunate. Kim and I had over 100 volunteers, and we started going through the list of names. And it's very humbling to know that the amount of people that'll support and work hard for an endeavor that they believe in. And many of them are here tonight, and we really appreciate everybody being here. Kim and I both would like to tell all of our volunteers that are here and everybody that work with us how much we love you and appreciate you and how much you mean to our family, because that's truly a labor of love, and we know that you were committed to it, and we really do appreciate that. It's been 14 years since I first took the oath of office as councilmember. During that time, there's been a lot of sacrifices that my family's had to make on my behalf. Too many to, too numerous to count. I'm very fortunate to have a wife that supports this endeavor every step of the way. Kim and I are very fortunate to have three children, Megan, Nathan, and Grayson. Grayson came in from the University of Alabama today to be here. Roll tide. They've endured the ups and downs of political life, of campaign opposition, social media, some of the sometimes negative things that go along with it and with public office. And that's hard on them, more sometimes, probably oftentimes, more so than it is on me. But Burlington, I'm going to tell you, you've got a family that will represent you well. And I hope you're proud of them, say. Kim, Megan, Nathan, and Grayson, I love you. I'm so very proud of you. I appreciate all your efforts and support. Thank you. And I've got my sister and her family, Tricia Christman, Michael. I saw Maxton and Matthew. I don't know if I saw Abby Kate or not, but I want to tell them how much I appreciate them being here. And my mother, Julia Bradshaw, is here with her husband, Doug. So thank you all. Let's give them a round of applause. And, you know, to sort of set a little bit of a tone, to our city staff, to our first responders, police and fire, all of those people that work on behalf of what this council does and what the leadership at City Hall does, I'm very proud of you. I love you. And I'm glad to be here and working for you again. So you got that. I want you to know that I stand behind you and support you every step of the way. And I think you've got a good council that's going to continue to do that. City staff's the backbone of every decision we make. Everything that comes from this council, there's got to be somebody go implement it. And we've got a great staff. And, you know, I challenge our staff, and we, this council, will challenge our staff to deliver world-class service to the citizens of Burlington. They deserve it, but we deserve to give them world-class support. And I'm going to do everything I can to do that myself. And one last thing, if you'll just bear with me, I want to give a real brief civics lesson. And I know David Huffman, our city attorney, always laughs when I bring this up. But I think it's important. We've got a council manager form of government. And I find oftentimes, not everybody really understands that. But in a council-mayor form of government, I, as mayor, am a member of council. I am no better, no more authority, no more responsibility than the colleagues that I love and respect up here with me. And in a council-manager form of government, we act as a body and a board. And yes, I'm a member of council just like everyone else. And I don't want to ever forget that. I think that is of the utmost importance in how we operate, and it helps us be unified and operate as a board. You know, I shared this desk with my colleagues. We all have equal authority and equal responsibility. I think everybody needs to understand that. And I may be the spokesperson and try to sometimes with error lead a meeting, but it is with unity that we're going to make things happen. And this is your council. Each and every member of this council has my respect and my commitment to perform to the best of my ability. We are a nonpartisan council. I think that's extremely important. Over the last several years, in some cases, partisanship has crept in and been a little divisive at times. I think it's important that we get back to what we do, and that's real services for real people. And I'm excited to be a part of that. We're a service provider as a city, and we need to continue to provide those services and focus on what's important to Burlington. And the national narrative, or sometimes even the narrative of our state, is not as important as the narrative we want to hear in Burlington, North Carolina. And that's important to me. So there's a lot of work before us. You've got a wonderfully experienced council that's up here. Councilmember Wall said it. There's a lot of, there's some good experience and leadership up here. So it's time for us to now go to work. But we owe results, and we'll be measured by the same. So I appreciate you allowing me to say those things. Returning to our agenda, the next item on the agenda is our code of ethics, disclosing any conflict of interest. At this time, I'll turn over to the interim city clerk, Michelle Parker Evans.
It is my responsibility to remind you of your duty to avoid conflicts of interest. I ask if there are any potential conflicts concerning tonight's agenda.
No.
Next item on the agenda is some additions that have been asked to be placed on the consent agenda. The additions, item G, Burlington Fire Department Fire Prevention Skills-Based Incentive Programs, and item H, Burlington Police Department Annual Record Rotation Contract. We need a, a motion and a second to adopt these additions.
Move we adopt the additions to the agenda.
We have a motion and a second. All in favor signify by aye. Aye? Any opposed? Next item on the agenda is the adoption of the agenda with the additions. Is there a motion?
I'll make the motion to adopt the agenda with the, so move additions.
Have a motion. Is there a second?
Second.
Have a second. All in favor signify by aye. Aye? Any opposed? The next item on the agenda is the, is the consent agenda. Item A is to, these items typically are non-controversial, so if anybody does have any questions on these, please let it be known. Item A is to approve the 2021 North Carolina Firefighters Association Annual Roster Certification pursuant to North Carolina General Statute 58-86-25. Item B is to adopt the 2021 General Records and Program Records Retention Schedules for Local Government Agencies issued by the North Carolina Department of Cultural Resources pursuant to North Carolina General Statute 121-5C and, and 132-8. C to approve proposed, proposed fees and charges, schedule changes to be effective January 1st, 2022. Item D is to amend Budget Amendment 2022-16 Project Ordinance to Recognize Funding Awarded to the Burlington Police Department by the U.S. Department of Justice Cops Hiring Program. Item E, to approve municipal agreements between the City of Burlington and the North Carolina Department of Transportation, NC DOT, for the required utility relocations and construction of sidewalks and multi-youth paths as part of North Carolina DOT Project U-6010, and authorize the Finance Department to move the required amount from the unassigned fund balance into a restricted balance fund. Item F, to reappoint the following boards and commission members to the Airport Authority with terms to expire on December 31st, 2025. Dr. Samuel Powell, city appointment, reappointment. John McDonald, city appointment, reappointment. Keith Hall, joint appointment by the city and county, reappointment. Item G, to approve the implementation of the Burlington Fire Department's Prevention Skills-Based Incentive Program. And item H, to approve amendments to the Burlington Police Department Annual Record Rotation Contract. We need a motion and a second for the consent agenda, please.
Move the approval of the, the consent agenda.
Have a motion for approval. We have a second. All in favor signify by aye. Aye? Any opposed? The next item on the agenda, I asked City Manager Harden Watkins just to add city council discussion on focus points for 2022. And the reason that I asked him to do that is because we were going to be able, as newly elected, to say a few words, and I, I thought it might be important to hear a little bit from everyone. I know I've reached out to all council members about sort of reigniting our working list of things that we want to talk about and things that we want to start looking at for 2022. We have a, a working list already, but there might be some other things, and, and there might be some commentary about it. So, I just wanted to open that up to council to see if anyone had any comments.
Well, Mayor, you know, we are, it's, it's, I, I've tried to lighten things up a little bit here. It seems like since the pandemic started, it's, it's like there's the bright spots which come infrequently, and then issues that come behind it. But what I think this community has been, and, and I've been here since 1975, this is a tough community. It's a hard-working community that, that has always stayed close, that has changed over many times in terms of its industrial and really its cultural and commercial offerings. But, you know, it, it's a group that I think will, will suffice. And I truly believe this. I think we're getting ready to go into the best opportunity we've had that I can ever recall in terms of growing this community. And what I mean by growing this community is attracting outstanding jobs, industry, and people who want to live here. You know, for some of us, if you think the, the I-40 corridor, just the expansion in the last two decades, it will not be in some of, maybe not, not my lifetime, but it will be in many lifetimes in this room where actually Raleigh to Greensboro, or possibly Winston, will all be connected. And just think about it for a minute in terms of that, of the I-40 corridor. We, we sometimes are challenged by the I-40 corridor, and things goes on we don't like. But the, having the opportunity, and Rose Williams is here, our, and Rose, I'm going to introduce you real quickly, the new director of the North Carolina League of Municipalities. Rose, will you please raise your hand? Thank you for coming.
When we work with the league, and it's a league across the state, and, and I've had a chance to travel to many communities now, we just do not know how lucky we are to be on a major quarter in terms of economic development and quality of life. And we take it for granted. Sure, there's some issues that come with it, but for the most part, it's, it's a huge, huge advantage. So, I think, as Jim has said, th, this needs to be a council of opportunity, a council to be aggressive, and a council that will take the, take the lead to take our community to another level. And I certainly believe that we have the, the people on the board to do that, and hopefully, you know, I feel confident citizens will support that.
Next up, anybody else?
Mayor, I would just like to simply say, it, the first time that I ran, I, and I'm going to be brief about it, is I think economic opportunity is a key for so many things. I'd like for us to continue to work on economic opportunities. I think we've got a lot of things in the works. A lot of things have been accomplished, and I'd like to see us continue that. And again, I'm repeating myself, but I, I think it is a key to the quality of life for all of us. So, I'm looking forward to working, you know, for more economic opportunity for everybody.
I'll, I'll add to that. I do see all kinds of opportunities coming our way, and I want there to be prosperity for all people in Alamance County, and particularly in the city of Burlington. We have some issues that some people have in housing and hunger and homelessness and issues like that, that we have been trying to address, and many, many volunteer organizations also are trying to address those. So, I, I think that as, as we see changes come, we need to realize that there are people who are, who are still hurting, and we would like to include those in the people that are working and making a living wage. We, we talked last night at length about the issue of pay for our employees, and I think that's a really important issue for us to address. We want our people to be making a living wage as well. But all of these things come at a cost, and we have to be able to balance what we think is the common good with the freedom that people need to operate their lives. And so, somehow, if, if this council can keep that balance, I think that's going to be really important. And I am enthusiastic about this board. I think that there's a lot of integrity on this board, and there's also a lot of enthusiasm for the work. And I appreciate that, and I look forward to working with everyone.
Thank you, Kathy. And I, I do want to, intentionally for tonight's agenda, we try to keep it brief. We know there's a lot of people to recognize, and we have to do the oath of office. So, I, I do want everybody to know that we do work quite a bit. Last night, we had a work session, three and a half hour work session. So, we went through our finances. This was our work session agenda. And so, this is a dedicated council, and I've always been very proud of my colleagues and, and how serious they, each and every one of us, take this role. But there's, there are many items that are going to require attention, and Councilmember Hikes touched on a few. In the past, pre-COVID, she and I would get together for coffee sometimes and discuss things, and I always left out of there with a different perspective on things. I look forward to that. Kathy, you, you mentioned that to me the other day, but prosperity for all is important. Housing is important. Homelessness is something that we're dealing with. I know Kathy's talked about broadband. That's an issue that we, we now have some potential funding available for. But compensation for city staff is extremely important. We had a lengthy discussion last night about our police and some of the problems that we're seeing, not only across the country, but across the state. We're filling it here, too, with our staffing. There's got to be some competitive wages put out there for recruitment and retention, and we're going to address that in early January. But then, following up for that immediately, to Kathy's point, is to look at all of staff to see what, what needs to be done to be sure that we're creating a culture where everyone is making adequate wage and delivering world-class services to our citizens, as I said earlier. Things like Western Electric Facility that everyone's read about. We're working hard on that. I want everybody to know that we're working hard on that, and we'll continue to do so. We've got some ARPA funding from the federal government, $11.5 million that we've got to be careful in how we deploy it, so we get the best bang for our buck, and maybe create some catalyst projects along the way. The guidelines are still a little cloudy on what we can utilize that, those funds for. And then West Burlington Recreation Center comes up often. We, we don't have an indoor recreation facility west of downtown, and that is a big growth quarter. Just next door, we've got Morphil Florist, and we received a, a little information on that facility and some of the things that we've got to look at. But downtown has got some very positive things going on now, and we need to support that as city council with the properties that we own and be sure that we're doing our part in addition to that. Economic growth, to Bob and Harold's point, economic growth is what's really important, extremely important. We've kept our taxes low. We haven't raised taxes since 2006. So, we've done that through economic growth and good fiscal management. Harold, when he was the city manager, and, and Harden and staff, most recently. So, there's lots of items out there that this council will be working on, and I wanted everyone to hear that, because while this was largely ceremonial, there is a purpose, and there is role clarity. And we, we're very clear about our role, and we're going to go to work on these things. And I just wanted everybody to, to have a chance to say a few words, and everybody out there tonight to hear that, because we don't normally get this many people in a council meeting. So, that's pretty good. Any, anything else from the board?
Mayor, I'd just like to mention something. I think it's the first. I believe we had a form of county commissioner here tonight, too. And I say that not to be funny, is that first element is any community gets something done by itself. It's a combination of working with our county, our school system, the state, federal government, whatever. And I, I believe the relationship, I certainly hope so anyway, the relationship between the city and the county will be as strong as it's ever been, and that, that's very important for all of us.
It is, and just as a sidebar, when you were pointing out, I also want everybody to know that my real good buddy, who I love dearly, Mayor Pro Tem CeeLo Fawcett is sitting here tonight. So, CeeLo, it's good having you with us.
Representative Steve Ross is here also.
Okay. At this time, we'll move on, on our agenda and into the public comment period. Okay. On the public comment agenda this evening, we have Suzanne Schoffner. Is that correct? Yes. Yep. Come right up here to the front. And Ms. Schoffner, if you would, please state your name and address so that our interim city clerk can put that in record, please.
My name is Suzanne Schoffner. I live at 611 Westridge Drive here in Burlington. So, hello, everyone. I'm Burlington resident Suzanne Schoffner, as I said, and I've been in this area since 1974. I've taught in our public schools. I've worked at Camp Greenleaf's with Harold. I've pastored two churches in Burlington, and I'm here on behalf of the community and religious groups, which have signed the letter that's going around the table right now before you. I also mailed you one, didn't I? Well, I want to read the resolution that's on this letter, so that all of us gathered here can understand our concern. There's people here standing with me, and we've worked together on this letter. But here is the resolution. Our city is deeply concerned about the grave threat nuclear weapons pose to communities throughout the world. We firmly believe that our residents have the right to live in a world free from this threat. Any use of nuclear weapons, whether deliberate or accidental, would have catastrophic, far-reaching, and long-lasting consequences for people and the environment. Therefore, we support the United Nations Treaty on the Prohibition of Nuclear Weapons, and we call on our governments to sign and ratify it. Well, you know, I feel like maybe I ought to apologize for speaking so seriously on a festive night. We're glad you're here, and we, we were here to see you sworn in to lead us. So, thank you. And yes, it's also a holiday season, but when, when is the right time to get real, to think about something so serious as nuclear weapons and the status quo of living under their threat? Nuclear weapons are a relic of the past, and in fact, they're now illegal. The United Nations and Russia have 90% of these weapons, and when the leaders of these two countries met this past June, they did, they agreed on a very powerful short statement. A nuclear war cannot be won and must never be fought. Even one bomb, on purpose or by accident, could slaughter, burn, maim, or sicken vast members of civilians, but also cause a nuclear winter. And what about accidental use? I bet some of you know this. Two nuclear weapons have been dropped in North Carolina. It's near Goldsboro. There's even a highway marker pointing this out. The United Nations Treaty prohibiting nuclear weapons is vital, and we should seize this opportunity to have our city, Burlington, join the other 8,000 cities which have signed it. This treaty is in force already. 88 nations have signed it, 88 nations and 8,000 cities all over the world, because people are sick and tired of being bullied by the threat of nuclear annihilation by those holding the weapons. And Kathy, you mentioned housing. Across the world, millions of children and their families live in poverty while the money squandered by the manufacturing, the upgrading, the maintenance, and even the sale of these weapons is immoral. We do have a public housing crisis. Every year, North Carolina taxpayers pay almost a half a billion dollars just for nuclear weapons. And with that money, we could have built 2.5 million public housing units. Cities matter. They do. You know that. Burlington matters. Each of you here matter. Your leaders, your opinions and your actions matter, and you can influence others to understand why this resolution is important. Just what kind of world do we want? This resolution before you is already in force, and we ask that our city join the other 8,000 cities worldwide to support the United Nations Treaty. 8,000 cities worldwide to support the United Nations Treaty on the Prohibition of Nuclear Weapons. We would be happy, our group and others would be happy to speak again with you individually or in a group. Thank you for this time.
Thank you. Are there any other public comments at this time? Yes, sir. Is that Mr. Paisley? Can't see for the lights, I'm sorry.
Thomas is pointing out that I only had three minutes. That's what we allow the county commissioners. I apologize for not signing up, but just felt moved to say thank you to this group, and I'm talking about the administrators, the Burlington City Council members. I know each and every one of you, and just I'm very, very pleased to work with you as chairman of the Alamance County Commissioners. All five of us commissioners look forward to working with you. We have a lot that we have worked in the past together on, and will continue to do so. I feel like it's a working relationship with all five of you council members and all five of us county commissioners, and I just want to say thank you. We have the Diversion Center, which I've talked to many of you about individually. I've talked to your police chief about on several occasions. He and Harold Owens and I had a meeting together some couple of months ago about the Diversion Center, and I'm hoping that we can put that into reality and save, hopefully, many, many lives of our Burlington City members. By the way, I apologize, Madam Clerk. John Paisley, I'm chairman of the Alamance County Commissioners, live at 1104 East Willbrook Drive here in Burlington. I should have said that on the front end, should I not? But in any event, look forward to working with each and every one of you. The Diversion Center, we have a work session. Alamance County Commissioners have never had a work session before. We're following your lead, and this Friday, we have a work session scheduled. The Diversion Center will be part of that agenda that we have, and we look forward to working with you folks. Thank you.
Thank you, Chairman. Tradition of working well with our county commissioners, and, you know, I'm very fortunate in the fact that I know all of them and have a good working relationship, as many of my colleagues here do, so thank you for those words, we greatly appreciate it. Any other public comments at this time? If there's no other public comments, we'll move to council comments, and before we get into council comments, I do want to make a few announcements and get those cleared up. Just some routine announcements that Morgan Laster had asked me to go over for this meeting. Just so everyone's aware, we have crews that have begun upgrades on our aging water meters with the new smart meters. That started last week. The city's upgrading to smart meters. It's going to improve both staff efficiency and customer billing experience. Crews are going to begin replacing 24,000 aging water meters in the coming months, and this is something that your council's been working on for many years now, actually. Most meters are expected to be replaced by the end of 2022. Water meters in Burlington are located outside of your homes, so residents will not need to be present during installation. Installers will work Monday through Friday, 7:00 a.m. to 5:00 p.m., and on Saturdays, 9:00 a.m. to 4:30. A door hanger will be placed on residents' front doors several days prior to installation, and installers will be wearing neon yellow t-shirts with U.S. Bronco on the back, and will have an ID badge with the City of Burlington's logo, just for clarity if you see individuals that you're unsure of. For local businesses, technicians will schedule a convenient time that's important to not be disruptive, so that we can get the meters replaced and cause minimal disruption to your organization. For more information on this, you can visit burlingtonnc.gov/watermeter or call 336-222-5100 if you've got any questions concerning those. Also, today, the Burlington Police Department held a memorial for Patrolman Sonny Vaughn. Patrolman Vaughn was killed in the line of duty on December 7, 1938. They were joined by members of the Vaughn family, and officers wore commemorative badges that are in keeping with the badge style during Patrolman Vaughn's tenure with the Burlington Police Department. This occurs on an annual basis to remember the ultimate sacrifice by Patrolman Vaughn on behalf of his family. This week also, December 5 through the 11th, the North Carolina Winter Weather Preparedness Week. The best thing you can do to be prepared for winter weather is to review your family emergency plans with everyone in your home. You should also make sure your emergency supply kit is up to date and stay informed about weather forecasts. And then, on a lighter note, holiday magic. This Saturday, December 11, from 4 to 7. Harold, that'd be good for the grandkids. The streets of downtown Burlington will truly be filled with holiday magic during this three-hour special event. Performances from local dance groups, food vendors, and shopping at local businesses, photo booths, faith painting, balloon twisting, nonprofit organizations will be present. San Amira's Claws, trackless train rides, and a lot more fun will fill the streets surrounding the depot area. That's Saturday, December 11, from 4 to 7. In addition, we have a Home for the Holidays Pet Adoption Special. That's through December 31. Adopt any pet for only $20 during the Home for the Holidays Adoption Special. That's now through December 31 at Burlington Animal Services Pet Adoption Resource Center. That's burlingtonnc.gov/pets to view available pets or make an appointment to visit. As a reminder, our city offices will be closed. Christmas holiday time period is December 23 through the 27th, and the New Year's Day holiday, December 31 as well. So lastly, January swim lesson registration, registered through December 19. Registration ends December 19 for American Red Cross. January swim lessons at the Maynard Aquatics Center, ages six months through adults. The phone number to call is 336-222-5043, or go to burlingtonnc.gov/aquatics to register. And then the one last thing I would like to add is, our police department often does coffee with the cop or I think some statement like that, and I got the pleasure of going and visiting with them at Salvation Coffee this past Friday. And what was unique about it is it was a shift overlap, it was a training day for them, so I'm guessing there was probably 30, 35 of our officers out there, and I know Chief Long's here. What a wonderful event. You guys look sharp, and I've had a lot of good, positive comments on that. Thank you for getting out in the community and putting forth the effort to put yourselves available for events like that. Thank you. Are there any other council comments?
Just to follow up on a lot of this discussion tonight, I'm very excited about returning to the Burlington City Council, and I look forward to working with this group. It's already been mentioned several times over about the experience and the leadership that I think we possess, and I'm excited about that. I'm also excited about reestablishing a worker relationship with the city employees. We have had a great run of employees for years and years and years, and I miss that part. You see them all over town, and you'd be amazed at what a pat on the back will do for you and do for them, so I'm excited about that opportunity as well. And they have an excellent reputation for years. They've had that reputation, and they continue to have that reputation. Also, we have a lot of former employees here tonight as well, so welcome to you, and you're always welcome to come to any meetings that we have, but thank you very much. Mr. Mayor, I think it's been a great evening to this point. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other council comments? If not, City Manager, you had a comment that you wanted.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. This evening, I had to share some sad news and want to pay tribute to one of our employees who passed away unexpectedly this past Saturday, Brent Jones, who was 36 years old.
Worked in our water and sewer pipe maintenance division, passed away. He served as a maintenance worker one, had been with us since June of 2018. One of the things we like to do is to share a brief tribute to folks that do pass away. We're sad that that has happened, and we're sorry for Mr. Jones and his family. Brent Jones was, like I said, worked in our water and sewer pipe maintenance division, made water and sewer taps and repairs, thoroughly enjoyed his work, especially when he got a chance to do waterline construction. His colleagues have shared with me that he really enjoyed the challenge of solving problems, both in the water area and also in the sewer pipe area as well. In terms of a little bit about Brent personally, he's a graduate of Western Alamance High School, played tennis and football at Western Alamance High School, was a big fan of auto racing, and also enjoyed participating in water activities. His colleagues have shared with me that he certainly lived life to the fullest, and Brent greatly enjoyed the time he had with his family and demonstrated his love for his family. So I think one of the things we also want to do this evening is let Brent and Brent's family know that our thoughts and prayers are with them. He has a five-year-old daughter named Oakley. We remember her at this time. His fiancee's name is Jessica Knott. He and Jessica were expecting a baby boy to be born this coming March, and Brent's father is Gary Jones, who is a retired city employee, and so our hearts go out to all the family of Brent Jones and all of his colleagues here in the Water Resources Department, and sorry to share the news, but we did want to pay our respects and tribute to Mr. Jones. So thank you for the time to do that, Mayor.
Thank you so much. I personally know the entire Jones family, what a wonderful family that is. That's not good news, but our thoughts and prayers are with the Jones family, and to everybody here, please say a prayer for them this evening. Anything else from council at this time?
Move to adjourn.
Got a motion to adjourn. Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor, signify by aye.